Calling this meeting to order, welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number 17, held today on October 4th, 2021. Notice of publication.
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, Notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building Building, 61 Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on September 27th, 2021, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough Website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Thank you, roll call.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gertensky?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
And Council President Seola?
Here.
For the record, Councilman Gindi is absent.
So he is. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as our own.
Please remain standing from the silence. Thank you, please be seated. There are no proclamations, honors, or presentations for tonight. We do have executive session, however, since we do not have a professional attending one, we do have one matter for it, which is litigation. The personnel matter was taken off, so we're going to move the executive session to the end of the meeting, so as not to have everyone sit around and wait for us to go into closed. The next thing on the agenda is the Agenda Session. An ordinance concerning the tree fund has been proposed. It's an agenda item. It would be concerning if you're replacing a large number of trees. There's been talk about it. This is what the Borough Attorney has given us, is there for you to review, and it can be put on at the next meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce this at tonight's meeting, if all possible, to the first reading.
If that's the pleasure of the governing body.
I'm assuming that I would do progress to the agendas on the table.
We were discussing this a while back, and I'd like to bring this up, and if you have this introduced at tonight's meeting, it's about the trees. If anybody filmed a large development, the amount of trees that they would have to take down to do that would just be financially a burden to them to do something like this. If it's a small development, and you're only taking down a few trees, that's fine. When you're doing a large project, it's a financial burden to the contractors.
What was the amount that was previously there? I know you put into this one fifty dollars. Do you know the amount that was previously put in there?
It was two hundred. Two hundred is two hundred.
Do you guys understand why that amount was put in a few years back?
You can't have a contractor that's going to develop a site, to bring in ratables to the borough, to have him pay an exorbitant amount of money, because he has to clear a lot. I see if it's a single lot development, yes, by all means, that would have worked properly. But for us to have a developer come in and develop a piece of property, that's going to bring in a lot more tax ratable than what this old ordinance was. It was by far, we shouldn't be doing that.
From my understanding, this ordinance also, does it also apply to the people who go before the zoning and planning board and are required to put trees when they're asked to? And if they can't, they have to put that money into the shade tree commission fund?
Well, it is the Tree Replacement Fund. And just to clarify the record, your current ordinance is $450 per tree.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, and this is reducing it down to $50 per tree. But yes, this would apply to people that go before the boards.
The reason that this ordinance was raised to 450 a few years back is because in order to plant a tree, actually, it's around that amount of money. So when we ask people to give money into the fund, it's because we're, it's with the expectation that the shade tree commission will then replant that tree somewhere else when somebody cannot put it on their property. By you lowering this to $50, how will the shade tree fund ever be able to replace the trees that get taken down?
My opinion would be, if we, if you have a developer, again, coming in, and you don't want this developer to come in, you want to charge this gentleman $450 a tree to do a development, he's going to walk away from it. If he has to cut down 400 trees at $450, so you're telling, basically what you're saying is you don't want a developer to come in.
No, what we're saying is, they need to figure out where, if they don't want to pay the $450, then they plant those trees.
Where are you going to plant 400 trees in town? Where are you going to plant 400 trees?
That's where they plant the tree. That's the purpose of this.
I'm sorry, I disagree.
I think this also comes back to where we had a previous ordinance, where you guys said, well, then the developers need to figure out where to park cars for development, right? This is the same issue. How are you going to say that now, let's lower the amount that we get, because we're the ones that are going to have to figure out where to place a tree with $50, where a tree doesn't cost less than $250 just to get, let alone plant it?
Well, just on previous administration, when they cut down all the trees on Main Street.
And replaced them with trees, correct?
In hots that fell over, that were destroyed with the windstorms. So, to me, the planning that was done on the previous administration was poor planning.
The previous administration's plan for the streetscape was not what it was originally supposed to be. That was butchered by this administration.
No, it was not. It was, it was done.
Because if it was done the way it was supposed to, the trees wouldn't have fallen.
You can't cut down a tree and plant a tree in the same spot.
Back to this ordinance, $50 will not allow the shade tree commission to plant a tree anywhere. $50 probably won't get them a seedling, let alone. So lowering this for certain people, I don't think is correct, especially when we're trying to avoid all the flooding issues. You want to knock down trees and not have them replaced, and only pay $50 per tree?
Okay, so you, in other words, you're saying, you're telling me that you want to lose tax revenue and ratables coming into town? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying I, I.
No, no, you're just saying that right now.
I would like, I would like a better solution than lowering something to a minimum amount, where you can't even replace.
I would like an answer to, Mayor.
You're on the, you're on the shade tree commission. How many trees have been planted this year?
She's answering.
Can I have an answer to my question, please? So you're against tax ratables and developing businesses in town?
You're against, hold on, you're against.
I'm not against trees.
Hold on, you're against a program that would help us facilitate parking in town? You got rid of that, because the developer needs to figure out where people are going to park.
Developers are doing that.
So the developer doesn't need to figure out where to plant the trees that they're going to knock down?
And where are you going to plant 400 trees? Can you tell me that?
There's plenty of parks.
What's, what's your, yeah, plenty of parks, and then you're going to have them growing into the fields, they can't use basketball courts anymore.
So let's just knock them down, and that's it, $50.
All I want to know is, my question is to you, you're against development in town for tax ratables?
I'm against $50 for a tree, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, Mayor, thank you.
I think the point that we raised this a few years ago was because if we're going to replace a tree, that we need to replace it, and $50 is not going to replace a tree. Because this not only goes.
So, what you could do is introduce it then.
Okay.
So, okay, and we will revisit this in the future. Moving on, well, let's see, we have agenda item. Now we go to ordinance, the second reading, public hearing, ordinance 2021-16. Madam Clerk.
Bond Ordinance Providing for Roof Replacement for Municipal Buildings Appropriating $350,000 Therefore, and Authorizing the Issuance of $332,500 Bonds and Notes to Finance a Portion of the Costs thereof Authorized Ended by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey.
This is, okay. We need to have the waiving of the full reading.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seola to waive the full reading, seconded by Mr. Gertensky, all in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. Okay, now we can open up to the public. If you have any questions, any comments concerning this bond ordinance, this is being used to repair our roof, roofs. First call, second call, third call. Motion by Mrs. Ballas to close, seconded by Mr. Seola, all in favor? Against, ayes have it, please stay awake. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gertensky, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Discussion, roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Have less leaky rules in the town. Okay, now, there's nothing on the agenda concerning the ordinance as per first reading by title only. Do you want to introduce it, Mr.?
I would like to introduce this ordinance.
Okay.
Could you see the number?
Ordinance number shall be 2021-17.
Okay.
17?
Yes. An ordinance by the Borough of South River County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River as to amend Chapter 350 entitled Zoning. They have a motion to accept.
October 25th.
I'd like to make, I'd like to move that the Council passed ordinance 2021-17 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same required by law, with the second reading to be held at a meeting at 7:00 PM on October 25th, 2021, via video conference, Zoom, or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Motion.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
No.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
We will revisit this now, ordinance, at our next meeting. We come to reports. Mr. Cox, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Krenzel, good evening, everybody. So the first items I have on my report are the 2020 and the 2021 local aid projects and the curb and sidewalk program. Bids were received on the 23rd of last month, and we're asking that you award that contract in order to meet the deadline of November 21st. The low bidder was JAD's Construction, who's done work in town numerous times before, and has done a very good job. Next item is the 2022 local aid program. Those applications are submitted generally in the fall, which we're approaching, I'd say late October, sometime in November, at least in the past has been the announcement date, so we can wait to hear about that. The 2020 substation maintenance, I reached out to the contractor twice, one time was today, to try to get their schedule for completing the cables and the sweeps. If I hear back, I will have it on for my next update. Well number two replacement, the foundation is being installed around the well for the pre-fab structure that will go over the top, that is due to be delivered this week. The 2022 Safe Roots, the school grant, Julie, that would be due by the 14th, so I think at this point we'll scratch it.
Correct, no, I hadn't been able to get enough information that I wanted for that.
That's fine, I'm not, I'm just mentioning, I'm going to take it off the agenda. While we're speaking about that, though, the new freight one is out, which looks identical to the prior years, and I'm more than willing to entertain any application you may have, but I think in the borough, most of your heavily trafficked roads are county roads, and you don't want these trucks on your local roads. So I'm not sure that there's something that would fit this, but would be more than happy. If somebody comes up with something, I'd be more than happy to discuss it. So in exchange, what I'll do is take the Safe Roots, the schools off, and put the freight one on, just to keep it in our minds until that deadline comes upon us, and we see if there's anything. As I recall, you needed a traffic counter, traffic study within the last five years, and I don't think, I know we don't have one, I don't know if you did pick something, if we'd be able to produce it in time, or what kind of study exactly would have to be, I would check with our traffic department. But I'll wait first to see if there's a project that everybody thinks would be worthwhile. So, that is my report. Most important from my perspective is the resolution for the award of the contract.
That's a, what, number 269?
It is on the agenda, I don't remember the number, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, 269, authorized contract for the 2020 roadway improvements.
Yes, sir.
And the residential curb and sidewalk program. All right, anything for Bruce?
I have a question, Bruce.
Yes.
When we award this contract today, what is the timeframe that that would begin for us?
I will have to speak with the contractor. They did call me and ask me, do you have the money? So it sounds like they might have an interest in starting this year, but I might be jumping to conclusions, so I, I don't want to do that. Once I have the resolution, I'm going to issue the notice of award, I'll give them a call and ask that, and I'll be able to let you know, okay?
And then I did read the information on that fright fund. I know you said most of our roads are county roads. I think I read in there that also if we wanted to do something in conjunction with the county, that we'd be able to apply for something on a county road?
Might be worth talking to them. The other thing I'm thinking about is the North End Industrial Park. You do have roads there, but that's pretty free-flowing, I don't really see issues with improving transportation there.
I would also say, Whitehead has become kind of a more industrial, especially with the industrial buildings at the end of Whitehead, closer to the East Brunswick side by DPW, coming all the way down, I don't know if that would be something we, or if the county would be interested in helping with.
Well, or just, I don't know what improvements would be needed in order to improve traffic along those roads, because it's, other than the 25 mile an hour speed limit, and they have the more developed end, the business end, I think they're pretty much turning off unless they're coming down to get, to go over the bridge to Saraville or up Jackson. So, as I said, I'm more than happy to discuss it, I don't know if the county's already looking into programs, it might be worth even checking with Middlesex, keep Middlesex moving, to see if they have anything in mind, so I just think with all your county roads, there's, and they're all straight, it's not like any of them bottleneck or have, even the improvement of the bridges, or, and I think the state was doing the one right on Old Bridge Turnpike, so.
Mr. Cox, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I spoke to a resident this morning, and they asked about rain gardens. Is that something that we've looked into in the past before? I know the city of Linden and Rutgers have undertaken a project. Is that something that we can consider in town with the areas that are flooding?
Yes, now, keep in mind the areas that are flooding, I don't know what benefit you'll really derive from them. Rain gardens generally aren't large, they're more of a water quality treatment through vegetation. Highland Park, Streetscape, if you go through there, I was involved with those. Rutgers does them as projects, so you could contact Rutgers if you have a location, and a couple of my towns have actually had Rutgers build rain gardens for them. So if you were entertaining it down at the end of the Clausway or something, or some area like that, just for water quality treatment, and properly done, the ones in Highland Park, we had the proper soil put in, they grew like crazy. We were pulling plants out of there because it was getting so full. So, they can really flourish if they're done right, but it's not cheap either, you know? And with flooding, I just wanted to mention, because, you know, you have the contaminants, the ideas for the vegetation to filter that out, but if it floods, then you kind of, but certainly something to talk about, it's a nice environmentally friendly project. And I think Rutgers, I don't want to speak for them, but I think it's free, I think they kind of come out and do these projects, so probably out of the school of landscape architecture, if I had to guess, but I could find out more if you decide that's something you'd like to pursue.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Okay, sure, good question, though, thank you.
Anyone else, Bruce? Thank you. Mr. Zenga?
We adopted the secondary on the bond ordinance for the roof project, and also resolution for professional services for the roof project on the night. The resolution for Capital 159, Office of Sunday, you receive additional funding from the county for assistance transportation, information assistance, so you need to approve the resolution and put it in budget. And there's also another resolution for joining national co-op.
And what would that do for us?
Public Works is looking into a couple things, also looking into doing some sewer work also, for a vendor that's into co-op.
Very good. Anything else from Mr. Zenga? Sir Adam?
The hydrant flushing will begin on October 18th to November 4th. The information will be found on the Borough Website, Facebook page, the Borough Calendar, and we send it out to Mixon also. If you have any questions, you can call down to the BPW. Also on Monday, October 11th, will be closed for holidaying. There'll be no grass or brush pickup, and also the leaf bag handout starts on October 12th at the BPW yard from 8:00 to 12:00, and the curbside leave program starts on the 12th on the south side of town. Go ahead.
Right, we're closed October 11th. Anyone for BPW? Okay, thank you. Chief?
Mayor, just got a couple things. This Wednesday is, October 6th, is National Officer of the Cop Day. We're going to be participating, we'll be at Dunkin' Donuts at 75 Main Street from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, so come out and have some fun with a couple cops. As you know, because of the road construction that we had last week, the Municipal Alliance's Cruise Night was canceled, that's been rescheduled for Wednesday, October 27th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, so Municipal Alliance is a big supporter of the police department, they usually go make money for us for a lot of our programs that we have, in the school, not only the schools, but also with adult programs that we have. And finally, October 23rd is the DEA's National Prescription Take Pack Day. We don't participate in that because we have these medicine drop boxes downstairs, and we're probably sloppy. So if you know anybody that has old prescriptions that they want to get rid of, the lawyer is open, even though it gets sloped at four o'clock, it's open 24/7, so if you know anybody that wants to get rid of old prescription medications, just tell them to come down here and drop it off in that drop box. The only thing that we don't take, we don't take liquids, so that's it.
Anything for the chief? Madam Clerk, anything to report?
Yes, I don't have anything new from erectile license applications, but I will go over the early voting again, actually, three ways to vote this year. There's the early voting, that's from October 23rd to Sunday, October 31st, there's, which is in person, then there's the vote by mail, which the ballots have gone out, and people are sending them back, all the drop boxes that are around the county are opened and accepting them. And then there's General Election Day to go vote in person, there are electronic polling books this year, this is a whole new thing, there's no more paper poll books. So for the early in-person voting, you can go to anywhere in the county, you know, you're a resident in Middlesex County, you can go anywhere to vote, and it's going to zip over to the county automatically, so it's, hopefully everything goes well, should be pretty cool.
So.
I believe there were specific sites.
Mr. Olivera works in South Orange?
Yep.
So he could vote in South Orange and vote in Middlesex County?
No, within Middlesex County.
Anywhere in Middlesex County?
Yeah.
There are specific sites, though, I believe, aren't there?
Yes, there are. There are 10 locations for South River, which isn't included, the closest are East Brunswick and Saraville, there's also Edison, that's kind of close from Brunswick, sort of close, but I think East Brunswick, probably, there's also an Old Bridge, too, so, you have lots of choices this year.
I already saw people dropping their ballots in the box down on Washington Street.
I brought my dad's, because he lives in Middlesex County, I dropped it off for him.
Now, you might not know this, and maybe it's something that happened over the course of elections, how often do people have voting votes, you know, will you find your name in? You know how often they're updated?
Well, now that it's electronic, it should be.
Often, because there's.
Yeah.
Why, if you pick one there, that, some of them, I know, they don't live in the state anymore, and they were still in there, so I guess I have to check.
And then again, there are the people who have been voting for decades and don't have their name in there. I always remember Mrs. Smith there. Poor woman's 90 years, in her 90s, and, I'm sorry, your name isn't there, yeah, so. Okay, very good. Anything else for us, Clerk? No? Anything legal?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Lundenski?
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things. We also put the hydrant flushing schedule in the electric utility bills, and it actually came out before the hydrant flushing happened, so no one can say they don't know about it, so, we did that. The battery storage project is moving along, and the website is moving along, if anybody's seen it. Every day we're making more and more improvements to it, but I think between the employees that are trained in it and the webmaster, they're doing an excellent job, and it'll still take us a little while, but it's an improvement over what we had.
Mr. Lundenski, I have a question, if I can, ma'am.
Sure.
I had requested from you, I know we just started up with the website, but the battery storage project, would you be able to put that on the Borough Website?
It is, it is on the website, under the Electric Department, where the original plans were, it's added on to the original plan.
Under the.
Been on since you asked me to put it up.
I was browsing around there, and I didn't find it. I know since it's something that's new, I don't know if you can pop it up into the front screen, so that people, because I keep getting asked, what's, what's being built down by Fitties?
What I put up was a site plan, for them to see what's building. The amount of information on the project itself is quite large. If you want, I could talk to the webmaster about just putting the site plan up, possibly on the front page.
I'd just like the link to it, so people know what's going on over there.
Okay.
And then I had requested for you, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to call you today, I wasn't sure if you were able to find the hotspot for.
Yes, we have it, and told Mr. Cuccio to come tomorrow and pick it up from my administrative assistant.
Okay, I had requested from Mr. Lundenski, since we've been doing a lot of our TV-35 stuff live and on the day, if Mr. Cuccio could have a hotspot, so he wouldn't be using his data while we were recording, so. I had remembered that our previous business administrator had one, so that's why. Were you able to find the one that we had?
Yeah, and it was outdated, so the police chief worked with me, since he takes care of the phone systems, and they got a new one. I tried to have it shipped to get it before the capsule opening, it didn't happen, we got it the following day, but he'll come tomorrow, pick it up.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anything else? No? Thank you. All right, let's begin ours. Mrs. Ballas, do you have anything to report?
Well, I'm just, I was happy to see all the people that came up with the time capsule opening. Once they dry everything out, they're going to be putting that in the library first, up on Appleby, and then downtown. Also, you can pick up a form, if you're interested to put your suggestions in for the next time capsule, that will be done. With the schools, school's been underway for almost a month, and I know that all the students and the parents are happy that their kids are in school in person, learning. There were some improvements made over the summer, including the resurfacing and the restriping of the track to hold official meets. This Saturday will be our homecoming game and parade. I'm assuming the route will be the same from the VFW up Main, downhill side, up David?
Right.
So, if you can, we're one of the few towns, it's the only town around that still does this. We do get a lot of compliments from other towns, saying, wow, come do a parade, that's really good, it's good to see the people come out and support all the. and support all the students that are involved, as well as all the athletes. So, you know, this Saturday, come out and support all the students and athletes and our football team. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Seola?
Hey, Mayor. Bringing up two things, which the Environmental Committee is meeting on the seventh of this month.
Thursday?
Thursday. And the EDC will be meeting on the twentieth of this month, which is a Wednesday. So just, I'll have more of a report at the end of the month.
Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
All right. Met with the Library Board of Trustees. The annual book sale is slated to begin on November second, which is Election Day, and it goes to about, I believe, November sixth. Their annual Halloween party is scheduled for October twenty-eighth at six p.m. And unfortunately, due to the inclement weather, they had to cancel the petting zoo, and a new date will be determined, and it will post on the Facebook. Councilman Gindy asked me to just mention some things on Parks and Rec. The trunk-or-treat is currently scheduled for October thirtieth, from four p.m. to five-thirty. And preceding the trunk-or-treat will be the Halloween decorating contest. This is something that Parks and Rec started last year, and it was a huge hit, so hopefully, we get some more. I believe last year, we had, I believe, nineteen or twenty houses, so-
I think there's more than that already, just driving around.
Yeah, I know. So you're across from a great one, so hopefully, we get some more Borough residents to participate in that. And as Chief mentioned, the Municipal Car Show is scheduled for the twenty-seventh at five p.m. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gertchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. As you heard from our director from the DPW, we are starting a hydrant flushing, and it's going to start on October eighteenth to the twenty-second for the south end of town, which is the Corpus Christi area. And then for October twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth, the center of town will be done at, well, from seven a.m. to two-thirty p.m. So if you're home, please do not try to do any laundry or anything else, because there might be some disturbance in the water lines. And the north end of town will be done on October thirty-first to November fourth, at the same nine p.m. to five p.m., which is a little bit different, because on the north end of town, they're doing it in the evening. So like I said, when you come home from work or something like that, too, if you use the water supply before nine o'clock, you'll be fine. Also, on the Office on Aging, they have high-dose flu shots, which will be available October fourteenth to Thursday, and it's by appointment. So you have to either call to schedule an appointment at seven-three-two-two-five-seven-two-three-four-zero. And that's to schedule your high-dose flu show. COVID- nineteen vaccine boosters will be coming soon. Right now, I believe, the only one that has booster is the Pfizer, and the Moderna hasn't been developed or quite yet. Okay, grant funding, they've, for two thousand and twenty-one, they've secured one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the grants for different programs and what have you throughout the borough for seniors. And if you can, get on their mailing list or email list to listen for updates and the events that they're having. You could call at seven-three-two-two-five-seven-two-three-four-zero. It's basically the same number. And, or you can email srseniors@southrivernewjersey.org. That's all lowercase. And with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had before this meeting a Board of Health meeting. We were still doing our meetings online. Unfortunately, we had some issues at our last meeting, and I believe we were hacked with a bunch of people who decided to make trouble. So we've decided, or in general, we've decided to come back in person. I know it might be an issue for a few of our members, but we're going to try our best to no longer do online. I wasn't sure with how we publicized it at the beginning of the year, if it'll be okay that we go from virtual to in-person? I don't know if that's what we've-
I'd have to look at the advertisement to see how it was written.
Okay, just to double-check, but I know after the last meeting, people were very upset with some things that have happened.
Yeah.
That happened. So we will be going back in person. Our Human Relations Commission, we had a very eventful September. If anybody saw, we had three flag raisings, the Brazilian, the Honduran, and the Mexican. The Honduran flag raising, for anyone who attended or saw it, they were able to organize that in a very short amount of time. And I will tell you, the community in South River showed up, because they had over, well over two hundred people there, and everything was free, from food to the music, to just celebrating their community. So congratulations to the Honduran community, and I hope it shows the diversity that we do have in town. The Mexican flag raising was the next day, so it was a very eventful weekend for us. Also showed up many people, and we were able to see many of the traditions that our community, the people in our community share, even though Hispanics sometimes all speak very similar in language. The traditions and the culture itself is very different. So it's good to see people from all over being able to see and embrace everybody's background. So if you can, I don't think we have any for the month of November or October. But if we do, we will advertise for TV thirty-five, we're at the next meeting at the end of the month. The Human Relations, in conjunction with the Food Bank, will most likely have one more large food distribution like we did in June. But I'll have more information at our next meeting. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing to report. We will now open up the meeting for a public comment. You'll have ten minutes to speak. Please give your name and address on first call, second call.
Mr. Brown eleven, is that the place? Environmental Commission Chair. I just wanted to, Ms. Mayor had asked, had we replaced any trees this year? And we currently have a request to replace two trees. They're actually trees that were planted by the commission several years ago that died, and the homeowner wants the trees we planted replaced. So we currently have a request for two.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? First call, second call, third call?
A motion, closed public?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola to close public portion, seconded by Mr. Gertchinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Moving on to consent resolutions, Madam Secretary?
Whereas Resolution twenty-two-one oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time now, therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Resolutions two-sixty-two accept December, September thirteenth, regular and executive session council minutes. Two-sixty-three authorize a contract for architectural services for roof repair. Two-sixty-four authorize the twenty-twenty-one Halloween curfew. Two-sixty-five authorize national purchase cooperative program application execution. Two-sixty-six authorize chapter one fifty-nine insertion for Office on Aging. Two-sixty-seven appoint John Embriano as lineman apprentice within electrical utility department. Two-sixty-eight authorize amendment for Portuguese Club special event state. Two-sixty-nine authorize contract award for the twenty-twenty roadway improvements, the twenty-twenty-one roadway improvements, and the residential curb and sidewalk program. Two-seventy has been polled. Two-seventy-one authorize October fourth utility refunds, and two-seventy-two authorize bills and claims lists. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Seola. Role call.
Mrs., I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gertchinsky? Sorry. Councilwoman Mayor?
Yes.
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 Councilman Olivera?
Yes, and I will be abstaining from two-sixty-eight.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, me, too.
Okay. And Council President Seola?
Yes, with abstentions from two-seventy-two, number twenty-one dash zero-one-seven-three-eight, zero-one-seven-four-one, zero-one-seven-seven-seven, and zero-one-seven-eight-one.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution has been accepted. There's no resolutions to be read separately, no new business, so we come to governing body comments, and then we'll go into closed session. I'll start on this side. Councilwoman Mayor, anything to report as far as various activities and things?
Yes, I do want to mention, I had seen that in the weeks that passed, there were other towns in our area that was able to get a mobile motor vehicle unit in their town. So I did reach out to our Assemblyman Sterling Stanley, who got me in contact with the motor vehicles, and we were able to get a date and a location for the mobile motor vehicles bus to come into South River. So on Tuesday, October nineteenth, we will have motor vehicles here to make it more accessible for people who have been trying to get appointments and can't. They will be only doing certain things, like driver's license renewals, non-driver's license renewals, registrations, real ID, license plate, and apply for your examination permit. I'm going to email this to our Borough Clerk with all the information, so she could post at the Borough, possibly at our, on our website as well. There will be a link that you'd have to sign up. They will only be there from ten a.m. to two p.m., and that will be at the South River Portuguese Club parking lot at one hundred John Street. So something to help people who are less accessible to get appointments or get to motor vehicles, they will be coming into town. I had seen that East Brunswick did it. Highland Park is doing it this month as well. So it's a good opportunity for our residents to be able to get out and make it easier for them. They are going to have limited appointments, so once this link comes out, I would suggest everybody to look it up and sign up if you can. So I will have that to you as soon as possible. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, the first reading to this ordinance regarding trees, I am not, not wanting developers to come into town. I am very pro-development and improvement in South River, but is risking the way and how our drainage issues are so bad right now, and knocking down trees and not replacing them, worth it? We need to really look at this ordinance. Fifty dollars to plant a tree that will cost two hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars just to get alone is poor decision-making, I'm sorry. It seems like this administration has done nothing but reverse anything that was done previously with no other agenda in mind. Like, I think we need to really look ahead at the future. I'm young, I'm still going to be here for another sixty years, hopefully. Knocking down trees and paying fifty dollars isn't going to solve any of the issues ahead of us, so. I understand that you might think four hundred and fifty dollars is too much, but I think that incentivizes developers to plant trees. I think it incentivizes people who go before the Planning and Zoning Board, when they require you to plant a tree or two, to actually do it themselves. Because fifty dollars, hey, I'll pay fifty dollars if I don't have to plant four trees that are going to cost me fifteen hundred dollars to do myself, why not? You guys really need to look at what you are doing before we do it. I don't think, hey, you want to change this ordinance? Great. Fifty dollars is not the way to do it. If you're only looking at the developers, I think you're wrong. It's not just developers that have to pay this. This happens to anything, when people are improving in their home, and they go before the Planning Board and Zoning Board, and they're required to do some types of improvements, and you're telling them, okay, fifty bucks, that's all you got to do. I think you really have to revise this. You're not looking ahead for the better of South River. And hopefully, somebody before next meeting really looks into this. That's all I have to say this week.
Thank you, Mr. Gertchinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, the police, fire department, DPW, and Robert Wood Johnson. Special thanks goes out to the Police Department and to DPW for the road closing that we had down on Reed and Main. It was a bit of confusing to a lot of the motorists and a lot of the commuters and everything like that, too, but I think things went pretty smoothly as far as everything went for the two days that we were shut down there. We had our time capsule opening, and of course, you know, like I had said before, I reiterate that we're going to have the hydrant flushing coming up. And with, I believe, our next meeting will be after Halloween. So with that in mind, please look out for any children that might be in the road. Hopefully, their parents will accompany them, and if they are going out. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Olivera.
All right, so as Ms. Ballas mentioned, homecoming is this upcoming Saturday. Make sure, if you're able to, you come out and support the Rams. Also want to mention the boys and the girls soccer team. Boys team, finally, they took their first loss and led in their first goal, but they're now ten and one, and they're ranked number one in Group Two Central Jersey. Please be careful, you know, I live right by the schools. Speeding tends to be an issue, just be very mindful of children walking around. And then, most importantly, come out, support Municipal Alliance with the car show. It should be fun to get everyone back together and try to get post-COVID, and see everyone back in the swing of things. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Seola, or Mrs. Ballas?
I'll go first.
Okay, Mrs. Ballas.
Again, I would like to thank all our first responders, Police Department and Public Works. The Public Works Department and the Police Department on the day of the time capsule opening were quite helpful. I know there were some traffic going through, so it made it a little difficult. If I can check in with the chief one more time, closures on Saturday for the parade. Because Main Street will be closed, correct? What, how they going to do it?
We don't close Main Street, we do a rolling.
So it just goes as, they follow, okay, you start in the beginning, and you have some at the end?
And we try to stay on the south side of Main Street, going towards East Brunswick.
But just expect there might be a little delay-
Yes.
-on Main Street. I'm sorry, just wanted everybody to know. And come out and let's see if the Rams get away. And that's all, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Seola?
Thank you. Again, thank you to all our first responders, police, fire, and DPW. The great job they do every day. They really did an excellent job with the road closures, and they kept the traffic movement as best they could. Go back to our trees. As I said before, the previous administration, they cut down all the trees on Main Street. They didn't realize that you can't plant a tree in the exact same place. And they left a mess there by having us plant trees in pots, and we had to anchor them down, because the winds were blowing them over. Trees that they didn't want to take down were falling into people's homes. Fire Department had to do rescues. We had to have trees taken off of houses, damage on the properties. So when you're developing a development and you're putting in a commercial area, the trees have to be removed. There's no choice in the matter. So the trees have to be done, and they shouldn't have burdened the developer on costing all this money to plant new trees. They can do other options, they can do something with the parks and recreation, they can plant some trees, they can do other things in town. I want to thank our shade tree commission. They've really come about this year, and they're working very hard on getting trees taken down that are endangering people's homes. They're planting new trees, they're keeping them away from sewer lines, gas lines, water mains. You have to be very careful where you're planting a tree these days, because as they're growing, they're doing serious- they're doing serious damage to people's properties. And I believe, correctly if I'm wrong, you have to be within, you can't plant a tree anymore within 10 feet of the curb, I believe it is.
No, that's one of the things we're trying to solve. Come up with a plan to say, to prevent people from planting trees in the verge that are going to, 50 years from now, have to be
Right.
Taken out, because they're destroying sidewalks.
Because they're doing damage, yes.
Like S. Leonard D.
Yeah. We had a few trees like that, and we've, and I got, again, I got to thank the shade tree commission for doing a great job on going around, doing the inspections, and finding out where there's all hazardous.
We will have recommendation for a new standard for street trees.
Thank you. Great. And with that, Mayor, I really have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into close, just to say, you know, we talked about the flag raisings. It's not just for the individual communities that are raising the flags. It's open to everybody, and you are welcome to come. And they'll share their food with you. I know, they shared a lot of food with me. But it was fun, listening to their music, listen to, see the young people getting out there, watching the dancing and all of that. That's, it's something different. It's something good. It's something to get the community together. And so I recommend it. I mean, the Brazilians, the Hondurans, the Mexicans, it was a fun time. It was also fun opening up the capsule. Really, really fun. I enjoyed myself more than I thought I was going to. It, I don't know, just because my name was there, but also, I mean, to hear the gasp when they opened up from 1918, a mask from the Spanish flu, and there it is, you know, it's almost as if the past was talking to us 100 years ago. It was fun, and you'll see various things on Facebook as pictures. You know, it got wet, but it's drying out. It'll be at the library. By all means, take a look and see a little bit about South River's past. Also, we've got the coffee with a cop coming up on October the 6th, homecoming. October 9th, by all means, support the young people coming out there. The 11th is a holiday. You've got the hydrant flushing coming up. Don't wash clothes. Be careful. Pay attention. It's an electric bill. You'll know what's going on. And then you've got the car show coming up, so those are those fun things. And Mr. Seola's reminding me about the other gasping thing that was there, was the tax bill from 1970 and the differences back then, so yes. Last thing is, not everything has been changed from the previous administration, but some things were challenged and changed, like buying fire hydrants that were needed, fixing vehicles, replacing old vehicles, repairing the roof, doing work on the water utility, modernizing the pump station. These are things that needed to be done, and it's actually being done. We wasted $96,000 to, on a Band-Aid to fix a well which we have to now replace. Those are the things that need to be done and to be looked at for the future, and that is what this administration is doing. We are going to go into closed session, and then when we come out, we will immediately adjourn. There will be no action taken. This is the end essentially of the public meeting, but you are all welcome to stay. We have the resolution for the closed session.
2021-261 authorizing entrance into the executive session regarding a litigation matter. May I have a motion?
Motion to both.
Motion by Mr. Gertchinsky, seconded by Mr., by, excuse me, Councilwoman Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mera?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Okay. Right, we shall return. Motion by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gertchinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. We are back into open. Is there anything else to come before us? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Gertchinsky, seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. We stand adjourned until October 25th. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.